Good. All right, I will call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to our Williamsport City Council meeting. It's Thursday, December 5th. We're in Trade and Transit II, third floor. Please rise for the invocation by Councilman Randy Allison, followed by the flag salute.
Could we first take a moment to to honor one of our own who tragically passed away, Lieutenant Michael Bastian? Let's have a moment of silence in his honor. Lord, we pray tonight for the family of Michael Bastian and or his brothers and sisters in the community of firefighters in Williamsport. Lord, we pray for your grace and peace on all of them to help them at this this time of sorrow and the time of reflection. Lord, we pray for your blessing and strength for all of them. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, approval of city council meeting minutes from November 7th, 2024, and budget work session one from November 18th, 2024. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any comments, questions on the minutes? Here you see none. Mrs. Franklin, item three.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Item four, limited courtesy of the floor. I don't believe we've had any requests tonight for that. Um, we're going to jump around here in the beginning. Um, let's jump to item fifteen, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to approve winter work for WMWA to perform work on city streets.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. I'll welcome Mr. Nar up. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, President Yoder, Vice President Bider, and members of council. What I present to you tonight is a request from the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority to do winter work between the moratorium that the city has where there's no work to be permitted from November to March. What they're requesting to do is install a water main along the Lions Ave. The total length of this project is going to be about nine hundred and eighty-five linear feet. Um, again, what reason why is because there is some deteriorating water lines and they are requesting to do winter work during this time. Um, it did go through Public Works and I can answer any questions.
All right, um, this went to Public Works. Bonnie, anything to add?
No, I don't. It's we're trying to get a jump on for next year. And it's something that's very necessary and time sensitive also.
That's right.
I'm hoping because of the snow, it's not going to be a problem right now.
I believe that they're getting ready to start work tomorrow. I mean, they've already done some minor stuff there today.
Good.
Any other questions from members? Mr. Pelizzi?
Uh, real quick, Mr. Nar, do we have any idea what the the amount of interruption time would be for water service to these homes? And the only reason I ask is because I'm thinking of homes that may have boilers with radiant baseboard heat, you know, as things get colder.
They're actually doing it in in the in the areas where it probably will not affect the total water loss. It may be for a couple of hours, but it won't be over overnight or during the day as well.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Any other comments or questions? Here you can see none then. Mrs. Franklin, item fifteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. We'll jump to item nineteen, a subdivision for Reach Road at twenty-two fifty. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Nar.
Yes, what it is is we have a subdivision request from Reach Road twenty-two fifty LLC. It is a former Spartronic's former Primus Buildings. Um, it is a large parcel within the ML zoning district. What they are doing is subdividing the two buildings. Each building will have parking lots. They have their own utilities, separate utilities. Um, it'll have access that you have access off of either Reach Road or Central Ave area. What they're proposing obviously to do is to separate the parcels to make it more, you know, amenable to uh new development. It did go through planning. It did go through county and you do have the comments from both county and planning gave positive recommendation.
Any comments or questions from members? Okay. Here you see none. Mrs. Franklin, the motion for item nineteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Uh, let's jump to item fourteen, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing renewal of a consultant agreement between city and Keller Partners and Company LLC.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mayor Slaughter, welcome, sir.
Yes, good evening, President Yoder, Vice President Bider, members of council and administration. But you have before use renewal contract for Keller Partners. This is just the the regular renewal that we've done. And this was reviewed in finance and there was some discussion around an RFP. I think there was a few weeks ago as well, uh, early in the year, putting out RFP for consulting services. Which, of course, we will do if that's the will of city council, um, and the administration is fine with that as well, but this was reviewed in finance.
Uh, really Keller.
Yeah.
Want to maybe get an update from them and then we can have a conversation about the contract and the finance meeting? Uh, Keller and and partners, I'll turn it over to you. I know you sent out an update, um, in our online. I'll I'll turn the floor over to you to kind of walk us through that.
Great. Thank you, Council President Yoder. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Vice President Katz and council members. And I, as the mayor said, my name is Tom Keller of Keller Partners and Company in Washington DC. And I'm joined by my colleague Andy Garfinkel. And as you all know, we have been the uh city's federal government relations and grant writing firm since twenty twenty-one. And I'm very sorry that we weren't able to be there in person at this time. Um, we've had previously scheduled meetings on Capitol Hill and logistically, we just couldn't make the trip. But we promised to be there next year. Uh, I I first want to thank the council and Mayor Slaughter and the city's team, uh, including Valerie Fessler, Bill Scott, and Melanie Shutt uh, for working with us for successful outcomes these past couple of years. Uh, I recall some time ago, the mayor was the acting grants administrator. Uh, but now we've actually got a team that we work with daily, which is just great. So working together, we've been able to achieve a great return on investment for the city and the Williamsport taxpayers. And if I may, uh, Council President Yoder, I would just like to take a few minutes and go through some of the highlights of our work. Uh, beginning with our most recent efforts, uh, as is laid out on our report that we provided you. And I just invite anybody to interrupt as we go along here and we'll try to just make this as uh, quick as possible. Um, let's briefly first talk about uh, the levy language. Um, over this year, we have worked with Congressman Musser and Senators Casey and Fetterman's offices to make sure we got language included in the Water Resources Development Act that would basically do two things. One, it would prioritize the levy in the Army's own work plan. And two, it would enable the Army Corps to waive the fifty percent cost share that the city would have to pay for the levy work. So the the Water Resources Development Act, which is a two-year authorization, uh, should be passed by the end of this year. Uh, it's required to be passed and so our fingers are crossed, but we think it will happen. Um, the semi-quantitative risk assessment or SQRA, which is a heck of a lot easier to say, originated from that October twenty twenty-one meeting at Penn Tech. Um, we had the head of the Army Corps Baltimore District. We had the regional director of FEMA, the mayor, the county commissioners, the water authority, and Mr. Allison represented the council at that meeting. Um, then Congressman Keller uh, led the meeting. But to to sum up where we are now, um, while the Army Corps process and the delays can be very frustrating, progress is being made. The SQRA should be completed in February. So, you know, in the end, all of this leads to the levy being certified and fully accredited. Um, just going back to last year, twenty twenty-three, um, we worked with Congressman Musser to secure uh, a three point five million dollar community project funding, uh, otherwise known as an earmark for the levy crosspipes, uh, pump stations, et cetera, which will be coordinated with the county. And uh, we are in the process right now of working with FEMA and PMA to draw that funding down. Also last year, um, we worked with the congressional delegation to secure two point six six million dollars for enhancements and improvements uh, to Old City, which uh, would also benefit Lycoming College. And uh, those things include the the streetlights, Fourth Street utility improvements, uh, uh, Basin Street, Riverwalk, et cetera. So similar similar to the levy funding, um, we're in the process of working with HUD to draw that funding down as well. In uh, twenty twenty-two, we scored, as everyone can recall, a big win with securing eight million dollars for the levy levy rehabilitation. And you might recall that during Congressman Keller's tenure in Congress, he didn't participate in the earmarking process. Um, however, in his final year and after touring the levy with the community, uh, he agreed to allocate eight million dollars, which was all of his earmark allocation to the levy project. And we're we're in the final process of drawing that money down as well. Um, it will clear the final process by the end of uh, January of next year. And then we also wrote and submitted um uh, a grant that I wanted to mention, which is the DOJ Connect and Protect Grant, which was ultimately not awarded. Um, but the grant is coming up again and we anticipate applying in twenty twenty-five. This funding would support police by um, providing uh, co-response teams with law enforcement to assist with behavioral health incidences. And then back in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, um, you recall during the COVID period, uh, when we were working with the ARPA funding, um, we worked with the mayor and the the council to advise and and guided, uh, you know, on how to spend that money, what could be spent on what projects and uh, we agreed on the public safety projects and the bathrooms in the park and the Shaw Splash Park and so on. Um, in terms of next steps, uh, we have a lot more to accomplish. And um, you know, in including bringing in more budget relief to the city. Uh, I'll ask my colleague Andy Garfinkel to just briefly go over that, describe the upcoming next steps and uh, our city priorities at the federal level, if you would, Andy.
Sure. Thanks, Tom. Um, good evening, council members. Uh, just very briefly in terms of our next steps, um, our first objective is to complete the drawdown of the eleven point five million dollars in funds that were allocated, as Tom mentioned earlier, through congressionally directed spending um, through uh, the a process that we worked through with PMA and FEMA. Um, we're far into that process. Uh, as Tom mentioned, we're looking at January twenty twenty-five for the drawdown of the first eight million dollars, followed by the three point five million dollars. Um, so that's moving along nicely and we expect to hear by the end of January about whether we can uh, put that eight million dollars out to bid. Um, the second area that we're looking at is completion of the semi-quantitative risk assessment SQRA. Um, that process, um, again, is projected to be completed in February. Um, the entire well, you know, most of the SQRA is complete and has to go through a review process internally, um, which the Corps says will be out completed by February and that the SQRA will be released at that time. In addition to that, we are talking about next year's funding priorities, uh, and we are going to, uh, as soon as possible, meet with Senator-elect McCormick and his staff to introduce uh, the city's priorities. Um, we're also going to be working with congressional delegation um, to advance some of Williamsport's priorities, including the Graffius Graffius Run, uh, water upgrades, the trash rack replacements in particular um, that we were not successful at in FY twenty uh, four because there were other competing priorities. Um, and we are, uh, you know, well underway for pursuing those funds. Um, we're now looking at it potentially funding a new public safety building. Um, and the city, as I understand it, has um, some um, some schematics for what that uh, project will start to look like um, and a and a physical plant location. So we're going to be look looking for uh, you know, cost estimates and um, some more detailed uh, planning documents. Um, in addition to that, we are looking at a grant called the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant or BRIC. Um, and that's to protect infrastructure from flooding. Um, and so that's something that will come out in the January, February timeframe, so we'll be working on that. Uh, and then in addition to that, just Tom mentioned, connect and protect. Um, one of our objectives there is to help the the uh, police department work with individuals who are in a mental health crisis, behavioral health crisis. Um, and so that in part is through these co-response teams with behavioral health providers um, and also establishing what are called crisis intervention teams. And so we'll be working in that process. Um, assuming that the police that we support Bureau of Police has the capacity to help us pursue that. We are looking at the feasibility of funding for a new uh, for for industrial park development, um, or new industry development through an economic development administration grant. Um, again, that's very, very early stage. And then last, we are also looking at cybersecurity grants um, through the Department of Transportation and the Environmental Protection Agency to protect critical infrastructure, um, which I'm sure many of you know have been attacked um, in recent years. And so we want to make sure that the funding is in place to support the city's efforts in that area as well. Um, with that, Tom, I'll turn it back over to you to conclude.
Absolutely. Well, um, I I think we should just, um, we've taken a lot of time here, but I just wanted to open it up for questions. If anyone would like to uh, ask us something, please feel free to do so.
Does anybody have any questions for Keller Partners, Mrs. Katz?
Yes, over the, what you've talked about in the beginning mostly is uh, levy projects and things that are earmarked, things that you're going after. But it's not only us that are paying you for doing this, the county and also the water authority. How is this working in conjunction with three entities paying you for the one sole purpose of the levy?
Uh, well.
Finding that, how are you, are you separating those costs?
Yeah, um, well, first of all, we don't like conflicts and we don't participate in conflicts. Um, as you know, we work on behalf of the water authority and the county. And, um, like with the city, we've had great success for, you know, on, on behalf of both entities uh, outside of the levy. When it comes to the levy, of course, this being the number one community priority, um, we have been able to team up and coordinate efforts to get funding, uh, between the city, the county and the water authority. And it really has been a team effort and everyone benefits. Of course, the city is the official sponsor of the levy. And so, um, in order to make all that work, uh, the city has to be the responsible party to receive that funding. Um, when it comes to other specific objectives, they are markedly different. For example, um, with the water authority, we're replacing water and sewer mains, getting funding for that. Um, we're repairing through grants, competitive grants from FEMA, uh, the Heller Dam. So we, we just got a very large grant for a million dollars to repair the Heller, Heller Dam. We're working on the Youngman Dam for the authorities. And we recently got, um, a $1.4 million earmark for their Grampian tank replacement. So you can see that that's quite different from some of the projects that we're working on for the city. And then for the county, um, we're focused on, uh, projects in rural locations that really have no impact on city projects. So we, we won a $1 million grant for a public safety building on behalf of the county in Jersey Shore. Um, and that's a different member of Congress. That's the other important thing to remember is that, you know, we're going after these, um, these different priorities, which are different for each of these entities. And we're also utilizing different members of Congress to do that. Uh, now that's just the earmark side, but also with the competitive grant side. So I, I hope that answered your question, but, um, it is quite different.
Well, the other question I'd have for you is, let's go back four, five, maybe even six years. We were making several trips to Washington, uh, and, uh, the objective at that point was to meet as many people as possible to help, help us in getting funding, get our, our, our name out in front of everybody else's. Uh, there really hasn't been any trips to Washington lately, has there?
Yes, there has. Uh, we, we had the mayor in Washington, uh, this year. And, uh, you know, with, with each of our clients, it is important when they have a, um, a priority before the Congress and, and even competitive grants, it's very important to bring the head of the organization into, uh, Washington and have these types of meetings. Even if we're going after competitive grants, the Congressional delegation can write letters of support and make phone calls at critical times, which we help prompt them to do that. Um, being a former Senate staffer myself for seven years, uh, I kind of know that importance and I know everyone here does as well. So, uh, you know, the plan would be also to target uh, the appropriate time this year, uh, to bring the city into, uh, Washington to set up, you know, the, the asks for 2025. And just to remind the council, Keller Partners has only worked on behalf of the city since 2021, March 2021. And each of those years until, uh, 2024, we have had city presence, uh, in Washington for meetings. I hope that answers.
I think that's what, you know, I know I would like to hear that. I mean, you've got it, you know, you've told us in meetings that, um, that's very important to do that. Um, and also I, let's go back even further than that. And I can remember Senator Yaw, he was really upset because things weren't earmarked. And, you know, we learned that process of making sure things were earmarked. And it's, it's very, and I think you can understand the frustration that we are going through this, what, how many years at this point, and we still haven't shoveled any dirt. And I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's frustrating. And what you're saying is, uh, come next year, um, it's a, that it, we should be, that the levy should be certified, which how could that be certified if we haven't really done the projects?
Uh, Councilwoman Katz, i- if I could just address that very quickly and because I don't want to make, have any, um, misunderstanding. Um, I don't think I would say that the certification and accreditation will come next year. However, the SQRA process will conclude, uh, hopefully in February. And then after that, there is a process um, that goes in place to go down the road of having this uh, certification and accreditation. And you and I are in complete agreement. It is so frustrating to experience the speed at which this is going. I mean, think about it, October, uh, 2021, we had everybody in that room at Penn Tech. We had a congressman leading this effort. We had Colonel Pinchaisen, who is the head of the Baltimore District of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in that room. Two years prior to that, we got an authorization in the Water Resources Development Act that should have pushed this thing forward. And yet, you know, then we had COVID that we had to go through, but that delayed things. And then some of the key people at the Army Corps, um, there was some moving around. And I can't tell you how frustrating it is. Every time we're in, uh, those congressional offices, we talk about it. We have a paper trail from members of Congress to the Army Corps. You know, that is, um, that's expressing exactly what you're saying. And I'm not exactly sure of the, uh, of the solution, other than to keep pressing and to keep putting language in these bills. And I do think this language in the Water Resources Development Act this time, it makes it a priority. You know, this cannot be ignored. And then of course FEMA is involved. It's a very complex thing, but, um, we are, we are a long way ahead than what we were in 2021. I can tell you that.
Um, Tom, if I, if I could just add to what you've just shared, um, you know, just looking forward, uh, you know, as Tom mentioned, the SQRA will be completed in February. Um, and in addition to that, the first construction, um, on some, on about 30 crosspipes will begin at the end of January. Um, so that's actually new news. And then in addition to that, the $8 million in funding is in the last stage of review called EHP, Environment, Environmental and Historic Preservation Review. Um, and that, uh, process is a 90-day process which concludes in January. And so once that process is concluded, um, if there are no issues, then we are able to, to put the project out to bid at that point. Um, so yes, it is a long, frustrating process, but, but we are, you know, finally nearing the finish line.
And Andy, just to add to that, you know, I, I would like to initiate another community meeting with the Army Corps, the, the new Colonel of the Army Corps, uh, FEMA again, and bring everyone together and find out, okay, let's, let's figure out where we are. What's the status of where we are? And I'd like members of council to be there and, and the mayor. And, uh, and let's be in that room and have a discussion about it because, um, I tried to get that down in October. It didn't work for people's schedules. Uh, but I'm going to, you know, to work to make that happen. Um, sometimes things happen after a meeting like that.
Okay, I have one other question and it has to do with you talked about the DOJ. Chief, did we not, do you not have something that you submitted a while ago for mental health with our officers? Is there something to that effect that I'm remembering?
Yes, but that's only for a limited time. So we're looking for funding.
I can't hear you.
Yes, but it's only for a limited time, the grant that we procure. So we're looking for, uh, initiatives to keep continuing on with it.
Okay, so your, your office is working on it? Is Keller working on this? Is this what they're working on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the, the one we have right now that's going to for limited time is the PCCD, we're also, which is state, we're also looking with Keller Federal Grants.
Yes.
To continue the program.
I just wanted to know if there was a crossover here and what was going on. I thank you very much for answering, answering my questions.
Thank you, Vice President Katz. We appreciate them.
Oh, I'm not vice president anymore. It's, it's.
Oh, you are?
Really?
I'm sorry. I didn't realize that.
Any other, uh, questions from other members?
Um, I don't have a question, uh, just a comment, um, on that meeting that we, we had at Penn College, um. When you get all those entities in the, the same room at the same time, um, you can gain traction because everybody's talking about the same issue. And, um, in coming to, to agreement on different things that sometimes they're not real big things, but they hold up the process and you need to, to get that organized and out of the way. So, um, I think, uh, Mr. Keller is spot on with planning that and offering that.
Any other questions?
Keep on rolling with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
Uh, Tom and Andy, um, just a, uh, not really a question, but a note to make sure it's on your radar. So next steps and action items bullet, there's a note about a new public safety building. Um, I, I would ask you to add into that, um, City Hall. Um, because the, the study that's going on right now, I anticipate us hopefully in January timeframe, having the data back on that. Um, they're, they're both kind of related. Um, and depending on what that data looks like, we may need you to look at one before the other rather than jointly. So I just want to make sure that, um, in addition to the public safety piece, City Hall, um, whatever direction that, that issue goes is on your radar because whatever we end up doing, uh, we will be engaging you and need your help in looking for federal funding, whether it's, you know, moving into a different one, rehabbing existing City Hall, building a new one, whatever, whatever makes the most sense based on what we get back.
Uh, absolutely, uh, President Yoder. Uh, keep in mind that there's design and engineering funding available. There's renovation funding available, construction funding, equipment funding. So you just keep us posted and we will, um, we will keep that as a priority.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Ms. Mealy.
Um, I would also say that when, uh, when, when you are kind of seeking funding for Graffias Run stormwater upgrades that we, and this is not exclusively a Keller note, but that we as an administration and as a council need to have a larger conversation about what Graffias Run upgrades look like. Cause I think we need to be looking a little bigger than, than a trash rack in the long run. And, um, and that we can't start looking bigger until we get some kind of a plan together that enables us to start seeking funding for something bigger. Um, so while I have no problem with a new trash rack, um, I would, I would like Mr. Keller for, um, if, if you are, if you continue to be our consultant after the March expiration of this coming contract, um, for the, um, for Keller to be seeking funding for something more than a trash rack. And that's on us. That's not on Keller. But we got to figure out what that is, guys.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's another one that we want to.
Yeah, well, and it's just silly. We're not, we're not dreaming big enough there to really take care of the problem and, and, and that's our fault. That's nobody else's fault.
Yeah.
And just, just to be clear, that the trash rack, you know, is obviously pretty critical in terms of keeping.
Oh, yeah. None of us are saying you shouldn't move forward on the trash rack. I'm just saying that I think it's a, um, a handful of different projects that will help us alleviate some of the Graffias Run, um, but flooding issue. And it, it's not just a trash rack. We need to be looking at other things as well.
Yeah, just to clarify, Liz isn't directing that at you. She's directing that at the other six of us sitting beside her in the administration. That's about ourselves, not about you guys.
Yeah, right. It's about, we need to give you better direction for the totality of a project to, to deal with Graffias Run that is bigger than a trash rack, although a trash rack is, is cute.
Yes.
We saw some of the flooding from the last floods that, uh, were caused by a failed trash rack, which is, you know, why we,
Yeah.
you know, continue to prioritize that. But yes, we understand, absolutely. The, the uh, overall, um, project objectives are very helpful. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Mealy, if, you know, I mean, we'd be happy to also to, um, to be in those discussions because, you know, you may not know where the money is or what it will fund.
Part of what I'm implying is I think, you know, there, there are pots of funding that we're not aware of. And simultaneously, there might be things that we would be thinking were, until it turned out you couldn't get money for it. So who cares? Um, because it's, it's not, it's not something that the city can take on on our own time. So it is something we need to design a project to appeal for funding, um, so to speak. You know, the two things need to meet. So yes, if you, um, if, if there were a way for us to shoehorn that into some other meeting when you were in town at some point, um, it would certainly be helpful, I think, so that we could start to get a sense of what funding was out there and then try to shape the project to, to match that funding.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Keller Partners? Okay, um, Ms. Mealy, anything to add from the Finance Committee on the contract?
That was what I was not quite certain about. So we are actually dealing with the contract now as well.
Yeah, that's, that's the item that we're, that we're open with. Yeah, I know. You kind of walked in during the updates. Sorry. Yeah, that's, yeah, we, we are on, um, item 14.
Okay, um, nothing in particular from the Finance Committee. I think we did mention that I, I think the four members of council who were there all individually supported the concept of an RFP this, this coming year. Um, uh, even though, you know, it, it is certainly possible that there won't wind up, there won't wind up being any changes to our consultants lineup, um, in the near future. Um, it is kind of a fair and open government standard that we thought we should meet every three years. Um, uh, but, um, that said, um, aside from these questions on, uh, some questions on the part of Ms. Katz about Keller's specific focuses and, and discussing that we would like to have more frequent briefings from both of our consultants, um, only because it gives us an opportunity to interact, I think, to, to learn about what we have, what, what they are working on and give input about what we would like them to work on. Um, uh, you know, obviously we've had a fruitful relationship with Keller thus far and, um, uh, and there is absolutely no reason why we shouldn't fish, finish out the last three months of our contract with them. Um, and then we look forward, we certainly hope that they will respond to the RFP in the, in the, um, spring and.
Yeah.
Right. Uh, we can continue the relationship.
Yeah. And to speak to the updates, I know we, we, in my time, we've struggled to get them consistently. And I, I, I know with Val and Melanie taking on these roles as part of the kind of conversation we had outside of, of a meeting, um, they're kind of aware of that challenge we've had. And I think they're going to be the ones kind of leading the charge or making sure that that conduit um, is clear and, and, and happening consistently, uh, which will be welcomed.
Yeah, actually that was me being a jerk and neglecting to say that Melanie actually said that she was already intending to give us quarterly, yeah.
Yeah. So.
Of course. So I think that, yes, I think that that will make a big difference. I, I do think that at least a little bit of face time between, um, council members and our consultants would continue to be a nice thing. Just, um, I think it builds a better relationship too and fosters a sense of trust. So.
Agreed. The only thing I would note on the RFP piece of this is for all of us, administration and council to keep in mind is, um, it is a very good practice and I agree with it, but, um, we've got a pretty decent transition federally of our representation, notably in the Senate. Um, to the tune of, I mean, neither, I mean, come January, there's going to be a total of two years of experience. Um, and so I do think there's value in having somebody that knows us well, knows our needs and can really hit the ground running and get us to the top quickly, I hope. So I, I hope we keep that in mind as we explore this process. We would be wise to.
If, if it is your suggestion, then that we try to re-up with the two consultants for another year, make that transition and then proceed to RFP. I'm not opposed to that, but I think.
Yeah.
If that's some, if that's.
I, I think that's something we should look at. I, I. I, I think that's something we should look at. I, I think it's something we should look at. I, I mean, I would encourage the administration to kind of look at both and, and tell us what makes the most sense. Normally I would very much be down the RFP path, but, um, I, I think this year specifically, there might just be a little bit more of inherent risk than, than most years, I think. So that's, that's your, that's you guys' call. But I mean, just some food for thought for the group and for the mayor.
It's a call that we'll need to make soon.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions on the contract? Okay. Uh, here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on item fourteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes six zero. Keller and team, thank you for being here. Um, appreciate the partnership and looking forward to continuing for the near future at least.
Well, we appreciate that. We, we really appreciate the council. And, uh, and we also, uh, hope that we'll continue to work together. I think we've got some great results, a good return on investment, and we should just keep it going.
Appreciate that very much.
And thanks to the mayor too. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. So let's jump up to Jamie, do you want to do twelve or thirteen first? Give a preference. Okay, uh, let's move to item twelve, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty one audit reports.
Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Miss Livermore, welcome.
Good evening, council members. Um, the resolution you have in front of you today is for the acceptance of the twenty twenty one audit reports. I believe, um, Zelenkovsky Axelrod is on Zoom with us for questions and a summary. We did do a summary in finance committee. So I don't know if you guys, if you'd like another summary or if you just want questions.
That's up to the group. I mean, I know the committee meetings are on YouTube, so we can go back and reference that. But if the group would like one, we can have one. I'm okay without it myself.
The only reason I suggested a relatively full summary in finance was A, because I, as it turned out, I had not viewed the audit. I had merely looked at the audit of the community development. Like Randy would be, um, because it wasn't, it seems like we might have enough going on. So, yeah, maybe we wouldn't want to listen to all of that in front of a full body account.
Yeah, we can do that. But Eric, you had a suggestion?
Uh, yeah, the suggestion that I had, if, um, Zelenkovsky would just like to explain a little bit more about the auditor's opinion and the hopeful change that they will have in their opinion as they continue to get, um, to more recent years for their audits.
Sure. Thank you. I'm Kim Stank. And with me is Justin Bell. And thank you for having us. Um, again, we have a disclaimer of an opinion, um, on this year's financial statements. Similar to what we have had in the past, um, we don't know that we are scooping out the transportation. And, um, so just do the uncertainties of the information. Uh, again, we have a disclaimer for the twenty twenty two audit, kind of looking forward. We will do, um, a lot more work and I'll do a lot around your internal controls as well as making sure your ending balances are good ending balances with the hopes that the twenty twenty three audit would be, uh, an unmodified opinion.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And as you guys look through that, if you have questions over those financial statements or the single audit report, please feel free just to reach out and we can have conversations on it.
Ms. Mealy.
A minor thing that bears, a minor thing that bears pointing out from the audit is that, with a relatively, the relatively great amount of certainty, it seems as, you know, as happens more or less every year, we budgeted for a deficit budget and we actually, our income was enough higher than expected. Our spending was enough lower than expected that the twenty one audit shows with some certainty that we, that we actually increased our, our, our ending balance by a little bit during twenty one. Which is something I think that always interests us year over year, moving forward. So, um, we were not in a deficit spending mode in twenty one. According to the audit, we are of course still in a vast hole because of, uh, other post employment benefits, et cetera, et cetera, on the books. But, but we, we eked out that, that little bit of an accomplishment. So.
Duly noted. This was discussed in finance. Anything to add?
Bonnie, Randy.
No.
Okay. Ms., Ms. Bailey, before yours.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think as, um, as, as Kim noted, we are aiming to be up to date on our audits by the end of twenty five. And, um, what that will look like is twenty two, we still started out in an uncertain position, um, but by the end of twenty two, they will hopefully have firm numbers and then twenty three will be clear so that, um, and then ideally we'll also have twenty four processed by the end of twenty five. We'll be timely with that by September thirtieth. So we should be, uh, in the clear and back to like a normal fiduciary financial, you know, state. And, uh, and then I think we can start. There, there's only Zelenkovsky is not putting as much time as they ordinarily would into these audits. And we perhaps are not putting as much time into the review of these audits as we ordinarily would because there's only so much information to be gleaned from them. So that will change here soon.
Okay. Any other questions from members on item twelve then? Any questions for Zelenkovsky? For Jamie? Okay, Mrs. Frank then on item twelve.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Move to item thirteen.
Resolution to accept the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three audit proposal from Zelenkovsky Axelrod.
Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Livermore.
Good evening again, council. Um, what the resolution you have in front of you is a contract to, in a a resolution to accept the contract for audit services for Zelenkovsky and Axelrod for the years of twenty two and twenty three. We did an RFP. Um, they were the only ones that submitted a proposal for the services. So this, what you have in front of you, um, we, I did submit the proposal. Both years cost are in the proposal. And also, Kim, if you have any questions on that, I think she's still on the phone.
Okay. Um, are there any questions for members? This did not go to committee. I think it makes sense why we only got one response. No, I, I'm not trying to make a joke. I mean, that's true.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Given the circumstances, I mean, I'm not surprised by that. Um, unfortunately they know us pretty well. So ideally they can pick up and move, um, Jamie, can you, what, what do we have a? I, I, I didn't get a chance to revisit the timeline or what may be in there. What's the timeline look like to get this scope?
The hope is to have twenty two and twenty three completed by the end of next year. That's the hope.
Next year. And then we'll only have twenty four.
Yeah, then we.
Ideally, we're doing twenty four and twenty five and get caught up by the end of essentially next year.
And depending on the timeline, like where we would end up, we could start twenty four next year. Possibly. I mean, it's, it's a possibility.
Okay. Any other questions? I hope we can dig ourselves out of the hole and get caught up. I feel like we're hopefully turning the corner. But if we're not, we got to figure out how to turn it because it's been going on before Eric was here and frankly, since Vincent and I and John started, we're lucky that it hasn't impacted our ability to do external things to the point that it could. That risk still looms as long as we're behind. So I hope we can get this done. And get it done as quickly as possible. Very much so.
We are heading in a positive direction.
Yeah, we are, we are. Let's, let's, let's hope that we, uh, stay on that. I thought we were doing the same thing when Tracy was here and either I misunderstood what, what she was saying or we, we fell, fell off track. So.
It's just a lot of work.
Yeah.
It's just a lot of work to dig through. And a, a lot to clarify and get done. So.
Yeah, understood. Ms. Mealy.
Yeah, that's somewhat my concern is that we, we simply don't have part, the part of our issue is that we simply don't have adequate staff to both work on multiple audits annually and deal with current budget. You know what I mean? And then to a certain extent, I, I don't know, but that's.
I know we hired.
Actually, he starts on Monday. Yep.
And so.
And some of twenty two is already prepared in the capacity that Tracy was able to prepare it before she left. So, uh, I feel like we are heading in a good direction and with the new hire starting on Monday. I, I feel like it is a, you know, completely something that we can accomplish.
And when did we pull in the new finance software?
It started in March.
March of this year.
March of this year. Yep.
Okay, so.
So things, uh, we will have it for a year. Yes. And next year, so budget can be done and those kind of things next year. So, so things will be easier. They are more streamlined now with that. So, so the process of really, you know, cut time in half on those things. So we have more time to focus on stuff like this.
Good. Yeah, just because it, it just seems like this monumental amount of work for our staff to get the information to Zelenkovsky. And then that, you know, becomes a bit of a hiccup too. So, um, I think we will get caught up. I think we are looking better, but now given that if we're hoping for a better end result and unmodified opinion, we have to provide better information.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on item thirteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Did I cover everybody that, is anybody else on line aside from Zelenkovsky? I don't think there is. No? Okay. Cool. Um, you can stay up there if you want. As I say, we.
I got lots more in my name.
Well, yeah, there, there are, as I said, we can go in order from here. So we can go to item five, Mrs. Frank.
Ordinance transfer number fourteen, this tabled.
Uh, so is there a motion a second to table?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second to remove from the table. Excuse me. Yeah, it is tabled. Motion a second to remove from the table. Does Frank want the vote to remove from the table?
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion removed from table passes six zero. Ms. Livermore, I'll turn over you to kind of walk us through on some of the changes on the revised, uh, that was brought forward.
Yep. Um, so there are some changes to our transfer ordinance number fourteen. In the previous, um, transfer ordinance, nine hundred thousand dollars was allocated to infrastructure development that has since been removed and been, um, separated out into police department PCs, public safety vehicles, and, um, some of it has been allocated into the public works vehicles along with another thirty five thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars that, um, was left from a purchase of dump trucks from the public works that has also been moved into the public works vehicles line item. So those are the changes from the original or ordinance to the new one.
Okay. Uh, so I'll make them, um, I'm going to make a motion to amend um, to, uh, to amend the ordinance in its current reading to reflect the changes that Jamie outlined. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right. Um, so procedurally, just to kind of get everybody on the same page, um, we'll, we'll vote on the changes, um, and then what we'll end up doing is voting on this again next week, given that the changes are substantial, um, the changes here kind of reset the clock um, on readings. And so we're kind of back to first reading naturally legally. I know numbering is a little funky for, you know, is it first or second reading? But that's essentially procedurally what's going to happen here. Are there any, um, questions on any of the changes? Any ca- questions on procedure? Um, essentially what this is doing is, um, utilizing remaining ARPA funding for, um, equipment that is, um, slated to be expended in the next year to two years for capital projects, um, which will be helpful because um, we're in a little bit of a hole there as well.
Correct.
Mrs. Katz.
With the, uh, ban shell. Is that, is this going to be completely covered?
That's the final payment. Yep. That's the remaining. Yep. And then it should be complete.
Everything is done restrooms there.
I'm not sure I can speak to that, but I do know that that pays the final invoice.
Okay.
I mean, Scott can speak to that.
Yeah, real quick, uh, it is, it is done. We are waiting. Our final step is elevator inspection. And then once that's complete, then it's completely done.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you.
Ms. Mealy.
I'll take you back on that. Um, you don't need to tell me right now, but can anybody tell us how much we spent in total on the ban shell?
I can get you that right here.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I have, I do have it.
Okay, yeah.
I have a worksheet, uh, the whole thing. So I can get that to you tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, awesome. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions on the proposed amendment?
Um, well. Just the procedural questions.
Yep.
So how is this working? We are amending this budget and then we are basically taking it back to first reading legally.
Yeah, so, I mean, awesome, chime in here if I misspeak, but the way I understand it, since the changes that we're making are substantial in volume.
Right.
It's requires us to re-advertise it again, meaning it goes back to naturally legally. Yeah, because. Kind of resets the reading clock.
Okay.
Cause you can't, you can't, um, finally approve it on the first day it was introduced. So really it's the amendments make it like it was just introduced. So then you have to then have.
I mean, I, I, no, I completely concur with the idea that we should do yet another reading on this. I'm just asking about the legal procedure and this is, we don't need to veto one and then.
No, no.
Open up.
Cause you're, you're, it's still the same, it's still the same bill. It's just your ma- so really the, the corrects procedure right now would be exactly what you're doing, which is proposing the amendment. You should vote on the amendment, then vote on the as amended ordinance, which is what I think you're planning on doing.
And that's absolutely correct.
And then next year, next week, we will do the same thing.
And then we, and then.
Between the two.
Exactly. And then, and then, um, Janice will advertise it on Monday and then it'll be up for next week.
Yep.
Awesome. Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you. Sorry, just.
Yeah. It, it was funky for me to be transparent, um, um, grateful for Austin, um, and Jamie and Janice kind of teaming up to not only figure it out, but then just kind of educate me on a little bit as well. So it's a little goofy. Any other comments or questions on the proposed amendments? Janice then on the motion to amend.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion to amend passes six zero. And now we're back to the main motion. Um, are there any other comments or questions on the main motion? All right, here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on the main motion for item five.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, uh, main motion passes six zero. We'll do another reading next week. Um, but we're close to wrapping up the, the ARPA window, um, which will be good. So, let's jump to item six, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance transfer ordinance number four in final reading.
Is there a motion in the second? So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mayor Slaughter, this is you.
Good evening once again, uh, President Yoder, Vice President Bider, members of council administration. This is the final reading of, um, the ordinance that was reallocating, um, the, the police surplus into the correct year. So this is just the second reading for that.
Um, is there a motion or I'm sorry, that we have a motion a second. Excuse me. Are there any comments or questions? All right, hearing seen none. Mrs. Frank on item six.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Item seven, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance authorizing installment payments for the city real estate taxes.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Uh, Kevin's not here. I mean, this is, I feel like it's Home Alone. Kevin's not here. Sorry, that just randomly popped in.
Now's our moment to turn down his signature piece of legislation.
Um, well, so I, I mean, we, we went through this um a month ago. Um, nothing's changed, so pretty straightforward, but um, any comments, questions, anything's been clarified between now and next week? Okay, hearing seen none. Mrs. Frank on item seven.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Item eight, Mrs. Frank.
See, an ordinance amending part one administrative code title seven, employees and benefits, article one five seven, civil service boards, section one five seven point oh one of city code of ordinances to codify the definition and appointment process.
Is there a motion a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Mr. White, welcome, sir. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Um, this is a ordinance to um add a definition to this section of the civil service board under the administrative code. Um, consistent with the city's uh collective bargaining agreements and the civil service regulations. Um, it's to add what is already the practice, which is the definition of what an administrative chief is for both the fire and the police bureaus. And to specify that those are, are in appointment uh performed by the mayor, which is already the present practice. Really just filling in a blank to be consistent with the city's other legal instruments, so to speak.
Thank you, Mr. White. Um, any comments or questions from members on this? This did not go to a committee, but it's pretty straightforward. It's some housekeeping. Okay, here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on item eight.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
No.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five to one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, White. Uh, we'll move to item nine, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance transfer ordinance number seven, twenty twenty-one budget and first reading.
Uh, is there a motion in a second? So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Ms. Livermore, welcome back.
Good evening again, council. Um, this transfer ordinance number seven is some basic housekeeping after the final numbers were completed with the audit. This cleans up um the twenty twenty-one budget, anything that had gone over the budgeted numbers. Um. Figures were moved from one budget to another to um help adjust those numbers and correct everything uh with the new accurate numbers from the twenty twenty-one audit.
Um, this went to finance. Ms. Mealy, anything to add from the meeting?
Uh, no, this is more or less housekeeping and, and long overdue housekeeping at that. Um, apparently these, the same processes in the works for twenty-two and twenty-three.
Yep.
Um. I guess it would bear mentioning that Tracy has um had a handful of times suggested when she was uh working with the city that we should do away with the line item budget, um meaning that with stuff like this was not necess- was not a requirement under law to move small amounts of money from one line item to another. Um, so. Food for thought, as long as we're looking at it ludicrously like the ordinance. It probably took somebody quite a while to compile. But anyway.
Uh, any other comments or questions from members? All right, here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on item nine, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. We'll move to item ten.
An ordinance adopting various operating budgets for the city of Williamsport, including general fund, emergency and reserve fund, capital projects funds, city hall operating fund, liquid fuels fund, debt service fund, and act thirteen and first reading.
Is there a motion in a second? So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Ms. Livermore.
Hello again.
Hello again.
Um, this ordinance, before you just outlines the twenty twenty-five budget that was proposed on the November eighteenth and twentieth budget sessions. So these figures outline um all of those proposed numbers.
All right, um, this and the tax ordinance didn't go to a committee. They normally don't. Um, so we've had a couple of work sessions to kind of go through the budget. Um, you know, I think um when the mayor kind of kicked it off during the, during the first one, um, you know, made the comment about the need for a twenty twenty-five financial action plan. Um, you know, I, I think um you know, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I, I think generally that's a, a message that um has been well received, at least by me and by us. Um, I think it's something that we um have anticipated maybe happening for the past few years. And I think now we're starting to kind of see um that, that gap really rears head between revenue and expenses. Um, and so I think, you know, when we talk between this meeting and next week, you know, when we, I think, talk through potential changes. Um, any of that kind of stuff. I think it's really the root of and the spirit of what it's really going to be, I think, focused on trying to put ourselves in as good of a, of a position as we can for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. Um, and so, um. I'll, I'll open the floor for comments, questions on, on the budget. Um, I know that um, you know, between this week and, and next week, um, there's some desire to um find some savings. Um, I know that the administration, uh, I don't want to speak for you by any means, but um are, are, are looking at some things um which um we've asked you to do and, and we're happy that you are. Um, I'll open up the floor for comments, questions, um, any kind of narrative. I know there's one thing we should chat about with capital projects. Um, but I'll open the floor for others before kind of diving into that one. Mrs. Katz.
What scares me with what's going on with the budget is realizing we're not bringing enough tax revenue into the city to pay our bills. And a lot of, of what we're going after is grants and funding in that area to compensate for the, for that, for that loss. Um. We, by the grace of God, and in so many different ways, I, it's terrible to say, but we were saved with the ARPA funds with so many things. If we did not have the ARPA funds, we would be so far behind in everything. But there are things that, you know, with the budget that I'm looking at, and one of the things that that really bothers me is salaries. And when I say that, it's uh, we're all constantly being told, and I can understand this thoroughly, that uh you have to pay a good salary to get good people. Well, I don't know how we're going to maintain these salaries down the line in the next few years because uh our population is decreasing. Um, and we can't uh go after our, our taxpaying citizens for paying more taxes with our property taxes. I mean, it's, it's, it's getting more and more difficult. And I know for a fact, there were two people that moved out of the city already for because of, of the tax rates that are going up. Um, and when I say this, when I say salaries, there are things that we really have to look at. We really do. Um. And I, I want the administration to know, I'm not saying anything out of um to get anybody into any kind of a problem, okay? But I think we have to be realistic. Um, and I'm going to start with IT. Uh, IT, because there were no job descriptions, our IT person uh does not want to do the council meetings anymore. So it costs us five hundred dollars a month now to pay for somebody to come in and do our council meetings. So that's, that adds up. Um, HR, um, really a nice person. I think she's on the ball. But her salary, she's been here less than a month, and she's going to get a cost of living raise. I mean, that doesn't make sense there. Um. One that really got to me also was uh the redevelopment authority. From what I understand, they hired a person at a hundred thousand dollar a year salary to work with the redevelopment. I mean, how could that possibly be? You know, and I mean, that just doesn't make sense. Uh, and it was used for mark money and that ARPA money could have gone for so many other things, probably. I mean, because we've been so careful where we were going with this money that it was beneficial to every department. And the three departments, the police, fire, uh, you know, and codes. I mean, there are so many things that they need to keep them, the, them going and, and keep them going safely. Uh, again, the ARPA money saved us in those areas. A lot of salaries that we're paying people are really for um big cities, big city salaries. That's all I can say. And what I find disturbing is you have people like our city clerk, Robin, who works in, in codes making less than a lot of other people, and they've been there longer than some of the new people that are making more money than them. And they're doing more work, which doesn't make sense. I think there has to be a real evaluation of what's going on salary wise. You know, and like I said, I'm not trying to point fingers, but uh, you do this in your own household. When money gets to be tight, you look at all ends of where you're going to cut and how you can cut. And the only way, I think, if we intelligently look at this down the line, there's going to be layoffs. We're not going to be able to afford salaries. So therefore, the layoffs are going to be in, in police, fire, codes, and these are the things that keep our city safe and our citizens safe. You don't want to see them lose anything in that area. And these are the things that, you know, when I got elected to this, this position, I always said, I wanted to be here for our taxpayers. And the taxpayers, there's, there's three things that they want. They want good streets, they want safety, and they want to be able to afford to live here. Those are the three things. I mean, we have, we work on the safety, we work on a clean city. The tax is really a problem at this point. It really is, and it's going to get worse. I mean, this year, we're going to squeak by with something, but uh it's what's going to happen the year after that? So that, this is my, my problem with the budget. And I'm going to say to, you know, the administration, I think you really should look at this and delve into this as far as how, you know, how you're going to accomplish this. I mean, we, we can all hide our hand, our heads in the sand and say, oh, this will get better, this will get better. But I know Liz, Randy, we've been saying this for how many years? You know, that we're going to run into a problem. And now I think it's, it's getting close. And I don't think anybody wants to see us file bankruptcy. But that's all I have to say. I'm just really, really concerned. I'm sorry. It took up time.
No, I, I, I mean, I mean, look, you know, I, I mean, again, I don't want to put words in the mayor's mouth, but I think, you know, how I took what he mentioned about uh an action plan next year, I mean, I, I, I think the administration kind of realizes it. And I mean, to be frank, I, I think there's a sense of urgency, that they share the concern, right? I mean, I, 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 I think a number of us have kind of had a little bit of that concern, um anticipating that this could happen. Now it's here, right? And you know, Bonnie, to your point, um, I, I mean, look, we, we, we're doing things as a city that, that we really need to do, that frankly make us unique um in terms of any other municipality that, that are surrounded by us, right? Um, and, and there's a cost to them. Um, but it's, it's always a balancing act about how can we keep our city nice, keep it safe, um, provide these services that we need to do and want to do in a manner that's manageable with, I mean, realistically, the, the economic demographic that we have in the city. Um, and you know, what we're gonna, what we think we're gonna see in the next couple of years is that, you know, we've got to look at some systemic components to get more in line with our economic demographic realistically, right? Um, and, and that's a part of it. That's a part of it.
The, the more our, our, the census takes us down in population, the less grants we can go after. And that's, and that's the other part that's scary. And I can remember so many people talking about that. And I would like to know and find out if that's a fact at this point, but I can remember Jonathan Williamson going on about that. And, you know, I don't know how, the facts of that, if that's true, but you know, uh, and because I know they were all watching, what was it? The, the one that went below twenty-nine thousand, and that's when they started getting worried, some of the administration at that point. And, you know, and now it's down to what over, just a little over twenty-seven thousand. I mean, that's, it just, we, we can't sustain ourselves.
Yeah.
We really can't. You know, and, and there've been, there've been expenses. One of the, the other thing that um community development, up until what, a year or two ago, we didn't have payroll for that. All of a sudden, we have payroll now. Uh, and that, that in itself, you know, you look at all these things and it's like, wait, we've got to pu- push the brakes and we've got to figure out how we're going to handle all this. I won't say anymore.
You're, you're, you're okay.
I get very passionate about it because it scares me. I love this city.
We all do.
You know, and.
We all do.
I don't want us, I don't want us to go under any, in any way, shape or form, and it scares me.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, look, we, we all do. That's why the eight of us are sitting in the seats that we're sitting in, right? We're passionate about the city. We want to step up and serve. And, and look, I mean, you know, when you start looking at challenges at this scale, um, the dialogue to start to work through them can be difficult, um, uncomfortable and, and hard for everybody. Um, but you know, it's, it, it, it needs to happen. Um, I'm hopeful that it will. Um, and um you know, we, we, we will put our best foot forward.
I think you have to look at a, a lot of the businesses in the city at this point. Everybody is struggling financially. There's only so many bucks to go around. And, you know, there are reasons why some restaurants are only open certain days. There are so, you know, there are reasons why, it's so many different reasons. The, the money is not here right now because of the COVID and everybody's still, you know, trying to acclimate themselves. I can say for myself, I mean, I've lost uh manufacturers, I lost, you know, so many different areas. And then what I haven't lost, they're, they're charging high, such high prices anymore. So everybody is in a bind right now. It's not only the city, it's everything and everybody. And we do have to just, we have to be careful right now, all the way around.
Ms. Mealy, you had your hand up. I don't want to. I, I just want to make sure I don't forget. Sorry.
I was gonna say, we may, we may have passed my point a minute ago at this point. Um, but uh, um, and it might not have been a good one to start with. Um. Um, but no, I mean, I, I would agree, Bonnie, that we're that we've kind of gradually been walking down a um, a, a a more and more challenging road. And I don't know that there are a whole lot of fingers that can be pointed in this scenario, aside from at the eight of us, if we fail to take any action on this moving forward. Um, because, you know, um, we've been able to see it coming ever since I took office on council to a certain extent. And I'm sure that there have been budget, budgetary doomsday profits since long before Randy and I, and you got on council too. Um, but the, the, you know, the, the everything gets tighter and tighter every year. And there's some point at which we can't really squeeze it out anymore. Um, the population issue is, is is, is one part of the problem. Um, however, I would say that uh, at least in my limited experience, there are a lot of people who are interested in living, um, especially near the services that exist in town. And I've talked to a lot of those people. Um, housing shortage is definitely playing a bit of a part in, um. I mean, there are a number of things that play a part in shrinking rural populations, but I think that we can build population in the city if we um had housing, um, especially apartment housing for, um, for people. Um, so anyway, um. That said, uh, we are, we are where we are. And I think the best thing that we can do is to try to cut as much from this budget, um, to put ourselves in a better starting position next year or in twenty-six, um, as we can. Um, I think that's, and then to spend this year uh closely evaluating all of our departments to try to understand, and not just our departments. I personally will come out and say that I think that we need to take a long, hard look at home role um, and, and beginning that process as quickly as possible.
Yep.
Um, because uh that has, will open up some new avenues perhaps for the city to just diversify our revenue streams. Um, and um, so there are things that we can do and there are things that we can do reasonably quickly. Um, it will probably not fix the financial situation that we find ourselves in, but every little bit will help. And um, what I don't like to see us doing is kind of. And, um, what I don't like to see us doing is kind of throwing up our hands and saying, oh, we're totally screwed. Because when the fact of the matter is that we are actually less screwed than a lot of places. So put it in perspective. And, and that, you know, the worst thing to do is to say, we can't fix it. So we're not going to try. Um, we need to try and not only do we need to try, we need to succeed. Um, so, uh, that would be my commitment for, uh, twenty five and for twenty, um, four, I think we, for the, to, to finish out twenty four, I think we simply need to make this the best budget that we can.
Yep.
Um, and in my mind, most of that is, is trying to remove anything that's not strictly necessary. Um, there are, and I will be, um, there, there are a handful of things I would, that we either need to work into this budget or that I think that we should work into this budget in the best interest of the city, um, over the next couple of years. Uh, and, um, so while I look forward to working with everybody to find a bunch of cuts and, and hopefully also with the mayor and, and Jamie to, to, to find some things that we can remove from the budget. I do think that we need to put, um, a small amount of money in here for, um, a historic preservation officer in, in some way or another, to make certain that we, um, continue funding our obligation to the Historic Architectural Review Board. And I also think that, um, as a companion piece to the, uh, park study that we're currently completing, um, et cetera, et cetera, we should put a small amount of money in here to do a bike lane pilot next year. Um, that would put us in line to get more funding for multimodal safety in the city next year. And that I think will be key to taking advantage of that funding before, I'm afraid it will disappear on a federal level here shortly. Um, that's money that we need to get into Williamsport. And if we don't move quickly, we won't do it. Um, so that a small amount of, a small amount of money there will, will go a long way in the long run. Um, uh, aside from that, um, are we, I, I, I have no particular motions to make today, but I'm interested in hearing what other members of council might think would be good areas for cuts, if there's anything that anybody's targeting specifically, and not necessarily to make any motions, but just so that we have it out there on the table and we can begin to, to look at what that might look like.
Yeah. Mr. Allison.
Um, yeah, I don't have, um, I'm not prepared to make a specific cut right now, but, um, I, I think, um, we, we're in a, um, a transitional space right now. Um, the last four years, we know what we dealt with COVID and, and some huge internal problems that it's taken, um, most of the oxygen out of the air. But, and so we've turned that around. Um, and I think we're, we're coming out of that definitely, but, um, so now we face these other problems. Um, and there are things we can and should do during this particular budget to prepare us for next year. But I think, um, one of the big, and we've talked about this before, uh, one of the big elephants in the room is, um, is the fact that close to, um, forty percent of the taxable property within, um, the city is non-taxable. Um, that is not sustainable for a city our size. Uh, I think we're a unique area in that, uh, we're in a very rural area except for the city. And it's all congregated in, in one place, um, essentially. And, and because of, uh, the nature of us being the county seat, uh, we face a lot of lack of, of revenue that otherwise could be, uh, helping us out of these situations. So, um, I think we need to, to make, to put that on the front burner. Um, we need, we need to address it at the state level and, and have serious conversations, uh, with our state representatives because, um, I always characterize third-class cities as being the, the, the state's stepchild. Um, we're not big enough to, to get some of the perks that, that bigger cities get, uh, but we're big enough that we don't get the perks that the smaller areas get. So we're in no man's land. Uh, that doesn't work and the state needs to address that. Um, and, and I think there, there are ways they can do that. But, um, we need to do our part to bring that to the front. And, um, uh, we really, and we need to lobby other third-class cities, uh, to join in on that. So that, that, that's more of a long-term thing, but I think that's a, uh, anything can get out of that is going to really pay great dividends, uh, down the road. So, um, in the midst of, uh, the things that we need to take care of and house cleaning things now and, and making us, uh, keeping us stabilized for the next couple of years at least, um, so that we can figure some of these other things out, um, which we still have some big things on the table of with, where are we going to land City Hall and, and all those kinds of things? So, um, but, um, I think we need to, to put all the pieces together and, uh, not just attack them um, in, in order, but make sure we're prioritizing everything.
Yeah, I would second that. And you know, I, I don't, I don't mean to put uh, the mayor on the hot seat, but I, I, I mean to do this in a positive way. Um, you know, I think we're uniquely positioned as Williamsport to do that. I mean, Derek, Derek, you're the president of PML. Um, that is a amazing opportunity, um, for us as a city and you as mayor to really spearhead that because multiple third-class cities are members of that. Um, I'm sure you hear from other mayors, um, and officials in other third-class cities, through your relationships that I know you have about some similar things. So I, I, I mean that in a positive light, you know, I think we're in a position where we can hopefully do something about that. Um, at least start that process while you're in that seat. Um, and so, you know, I hope as, as a part of that plan that we collaborate and put together, I think that's a foundational element of it. Right? And I'd be excited to see that, that start.
Yes, agreed. And I would say that it's probably already started, uh, not probably, it has started and we've started to collaborate and as you mentioned, there's a number of cities, townships and boroughs that are part of PML. Um, and will be headed to Harrisburg actually in January. So I agree with Councilman Allison too, uh, as far as the third-class cities. Um, and I know Kevin Mack, you mentioned it and we, uh, PML and others have advocated and we will continue to do so for flexibility, uh, you know, with whether CIT, LST and the Councilwoman Mila's point, a lot of folks go to Home Rule or interact forty-seven to get those flexible options. So why the legislature won't just give us those flexible options to begin with, doesn't make sense to any of us. So we'll continue to advocate for that. It does put us in a unique position. Um, and I think we are all on the same page regarding that. Um, and that's what we will continue to advocate for amongst other things. But I agree that first, you know, Philly, Pittsburgh, et cetera, have options that we don't have. And you know, there's some options that the legislature could give us, um, that we'll advocate for, and I think just makes sense. And then frankly, not really, uh, contentious, uh, bills or anything. So it should, you know. So anyway, yes, I agree with you.
Yeah. Yeah. And I mean, you know, to add on to that, I mean, our, our state Senator Gene Yaw is a senior senator. Right? Um, and we, you know, we're the largest municipality he's gotten to twenty-third. Um, his office is just a block away. Um, our state rep Jamie Flick, um, you know, from what I can tell, um, is really representing Williamsport well and really responsive to our needs. I mean, so I think, you know, you add in that, you know, we're, this is a good time to, to make that push. Big time. Well said, Randy. Well said. Um, the, the only, so the only one that I potentially have today is kind of related to capital projects. So we, we made some moves with rescue plan funding, um, to, um, do some capital expenditures that were currently planned for next year. Um, I have some, uh, Derek, Jamie, you both helped me with some language here on that. Um, that, that's, that's welcome and appreciated. Um, and I, so I just want to be clear on um, this language. So what this language would do is essentially take money that is currently from the general fund to capital projects and put it back into the general fund. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
It's currently in capital projects that was saved for the items that were to be purchased in twenty twenty-five. So it was capital savings. That will, there will be a transfer in capital projects that will go directly into the general fund as a revenue line item in the general fund.
Okay.
So everything that was saved for, that was to be purchased in twenty twenty-five, those savings will be transferred into the general fund.
Okay. And that number by the, by the value you gave me was six hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Um,
Yes, correct.
Mm-hmm. Six hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred dollars.
In your budget book, um, under capital projects, they were the items listed as the purchases for each of the departments. So, um, the savings for those items totals that.
Okay.
So it's all the savings up to this year.
So, so I guess my question to the group is, is, is that something that we want to do? Do we want to move six hundred and some thousand dollars that is currently in capital projects that we have saved for expenditures that we are going to use ARPA for and put it back into the general fund? I mean, that, that, that's the one that I have.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. So, I mean, so what's, uh, is that you, you would like to do that?
Yes, I would like to do that. And to, to, Randy?
Vince? Bonnie? Liz?
I mean, so let me just understand, and I apologize here. I was looking at something and maybe I'm not following you. Um, the point is that that is, so we have obviously purchases out of capital projects that are not going to be, that are, that are not coming out of capital projects this year, right?
Correct. They've been moved to ARPA.
Right, to ARPA.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I, but we also have, um, input into, um, the capital projects fund that is not going into the capital projects fund, the sale of City Hall.
So that, that, so that is a dynamic as well as a part of it.
Right.
So I, I, and, and to be frank, I don't know what other people completely think.
It would be my preference to leave the money in the capital projects fund. Also, also zero out the sale of City Hall line item. If we sell City Hall, then great, that money goes into the general fund. Um, but, but otherwise, at least we've got a budget that is, I mean, what we will, I would presume we will also be removing, zeroing out those capital purchases lines within the expenditures and it will, it, but the money will continue unless you're telling me that we will now be overfunded, even if we don't sell City Hall.
In capital projects. So the six hundred and, uh, so that's savings for the items that we were going to purchase. It will not affect any of the, um, general fund, capital projects line items. Just so you're aware, each department has general fund, capital projects, line items, so they're to save for future projects. That, that will not change that. So, um, basically what that was doing was taking the savings for those, those items that we had saved, you know, to, um, purchase, we're still going to be unfunded. We would still be unfunded. It would be the same.
Right. Well, what I'm looking at is, so we have a, a total unfunded amount if we, if we, if we don't include a sale from City Hall of one point one five million.
I, I don't have my budget, but, but whatever that line under, on, on, yes, it would stay the same.
Right, right, right.
Oh, this is just bringing cash into the government.
We are spending eight hundred and forty-four thousand of ARPA funding, right?
There's, um, well,
It's like one point one.
It's one, it's one point three in total.
So, so three of the vehicles, the vehicles in your city capital projects are, that are highlighted there. Those items are being purchased. They were the public works vehicles. Then we took all of the purchases that were for twenty twenty-five specifically and put those into ARPA.
Right.
Um, so it ultimately does not change that. If we move, if we transfer the six hundred and thirty-four thousand into the general fund, it doesn't change your capital projects, that unfunded section in any way. Because the savings for the previously thought items for public works were already taken out. And then these ones, we were going to, um, fund with, there was a five hundred thousand for City Hall.
And then six hundred and fifty-one thousand that was unfunded totally, that we didn't have the money for.
Correct.
Right. Um, so I guess what I'm putting out there, I, I, I would need to sit down with Jamie and look at the actual numbers a little better, but it doesn't seem to me that we actually have six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in there without shorting future purchases.
Well, these are savings for purchases that, the current, I mean, we're still going to be unfunded. You're correct. We're still going to be unfunded. I mean, if we didn't take this money, that could go towards the unfunded sections. We have time to make up those, you know, with future possibilities. We have time to make up that funding. I, I believe that was the thought. I believe that was the thought behind this, which you, to do, put a Band-Aid, I, I guess.
So, so let me make sure I'm understanding this correctly. Um, by
Screwing twenty-six.
That's, that's all right.
I mean, the funding for twenty-six will be there, but it, it should be, it, it, it's going in later years. There's possibilities of
Moving this money will catch up to us.
It, it could, if we do not find in the future, the ability to fund the unfunded amount, yes, it could catch up to us.
I think we're actually still somewhat unfunded, even if we leave the six thirty-four in there, right? Six thirty-six, whatever.
Yeah, I believe we would still be.
I think we're still
I'd have to look at it.
Year of three, you know, to have a fully funded year in capital projects, I think we're still shorted, even if we leave that money there.
Okay.
So you don't I mean, fully funded in the future.
I don't think we should.
Awesome.
Because my point is we're going to try and short the, the capital projects budget next year.
So, so here's, so here's the, I'm, I'm not making this amendment. Okay. Just to be clear.
Yeah. Oh, no, 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 no.
Um, but the, the, the language I have is, um, removing all of the twenty twenty-five capital purchases and line items in the capital projects budget and adding a transfer in the amount of six thirty-six, four hundred out of capital projects fund into the general fund. Would that require four or five votes? Right? That's the way it reads to me.
So it's, I mean, it's five votes to increase something.
But I, I don't know if that movement is increasing it or not. That's, that's my question.
I think you have to do it separately though, don't you? I mean, so it would be transferring, transferring the money into a different fund would be increasing that other fund.
I think you may, I think you usually do them as two separate.
Yeah.
The reduction and then the increase. So I guess the one way it would be four and then the other one be a five.
All right. Um, so Liz is a no.
Well, you can say that.
No, no, I, I, I have seen it. Eric, please.
If, if I, if I could just give my opinion after listening to Liz and everything else that we're talking about, um, and with the full understanding that we are going into next year with the deficit, with deficit spending, but we're still going to have cash on hand of the tune of like one point three million dollars, I believe it is.
Um, I, I don't, my budget book is over there, but I, it, we will, and yeah, I should have brought it up here.
You should have it memorized. Um, you talk about the ending balance?
Yes.
One point one, one, just under one point.
Yeah. So that would be our ending balance in cash at the end of the year. If we spent every expenditure, we got exactly the revenue that we, we planned.
So to your point, Liz, and what I think we should all understand, um, is the fact that putting this money in the general fund is only going to disguise the problem
Right.
a little bit more. It is not going to solve
Yep.
any problem that we particularly have right now in front of us. So why, yes, I agree that moving this money to the general fund would give us a little bit more flexibility for next year. I do also agree
Yep.
that we shouldn't
And, and we can do it sometime.
And we can do it sometimes. However,
You know.
Again, the challenge to the administration that we've all talked about, and what I will say is to, to the mayor's credit and to everybody in the administration's credit, um, it seems like he has a phenomenal team around him at this point. And everybody is here to do the work and we appreciate the work that you've put into this particular budget. So thank you all for that.
Yep.
Um, we, this capital project budget means nothing come twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, if we don't do the work next year. So we could just be transferring all of this out to cover our butts in future years. So
Well, we got about two years worth and then we want to transfer it all out.
So
And we'll be back to leasing equipment for three years.
Keeping it where it is may be the pertinent thing to do at the moment. Keeping it where it is may be the pertinent thing to do at the moment. So that way we have a very clear understanding for twenty five and what we're actually working with.
Yeah. Fair.
Well. I was, we could always just leave it here how it is now. Until we're able to discuss it a bit further and more in depth, so then we all feel very comfortable with what, whatever the decision may be.
Yeah. A- 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 and again, I mean, that, that's the only thing that, you know, I know. Um, wa- wa- was, was maybe talked about amongst a couple of people pri- previously. Um, and it's something we need as a group need to talk about, and so we don't need to make that change tonight. Um, we can do it next week. We don't need to make the change at all. So I, I just wanted to, it's a discussion we need to have.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy?
Um, I think the point that I would make is that, um, we can probably always transfer money out of the capital projects fund if we need to. Um, however, if we take it out, we will never put it back. Um, unless we get a rainfall. So much like the emergency and reserve fund, I would advocate for leaving it exactly where it is until. For some reason or another, there's, there's something that necessitates us moving it out. Um. I don't know. It, it, there are some interesting parallels between personal budgeting and city budgeting. Not many, but one is if you keep all the money in your checking account, then you generally spend it. So.
Yep. Yep. Okay.
I think we can. You make sense.
No, I, I, I don't disagree. I mean, that's, that's part of the dialogue we've got to have. Absolutely. Absolutely.
But you've been advocating these things for years.
Well, uh, so, okay, so I thought that it was a stroke of, um. Maybe not brilliance, but particular insight on the part of Tracy who, um, was helping with our finances for a while. To take in a chunk of ARPA funding and create for us a capital projects budget that allows us to save. Toward important purchases that the city will need to make year over year. Because I watched us for years, kick a piece of equipment until we just couldn't get it to go anymore. And then lease and, and then spend extra money on, um, on lease payments. And interest payments to afford the equipment that we needed. Costing ourselves five percent over the purchase price of things over and over again, a stupid waste of taxpayer funding, uh, to my way of thinking. And so the fact that we now have a system in place that allows us to avoid that, that allows us to maximize the amount of income that we have as a city. Um, seems like a, a godsend to me frankly, and something that I would not have looked for as, as, as a fallout, as a piece of fallout from the pandemic. And so I will do everything I can to make certain that we don't wind up back in the position that we were in for the first. Ten years I was on council when we were scraping to, to buy things. That, that just seems, and, and wasting money in the process. Um, that seems incredibly foolhardy to me and, um, and that's something I am very committed to. Um, okay, sorry. I'll, I'll stop now.
Um, so tha- that's the only. Item that I, that I thought for sure, like concretely that I, I know I wanted to talk about and have a dialogue on. Um, to be candid, I'm looking forward to what Jamie and Derek, you guys, you both come up with, um, for second reading. Um. So. Uh, I, I don't know if others have other specific. Cuts, um, items to bring forward, if they want to make sure the administration looks at, um. I don't know if there's any other dialogue others want to have related to the budget. But. Here we are.
Well, uh. Two points, sorry to return to the capital projects budget, but two other points about that. Um, no, well, well, actually, one of which is that the fact that we have the money in place to replace equipment in a timely fashion. Does not to me mean that we should ever be replacing equipment that hasn't used, lived its full useful life. Um, we should be making the most out of everything and also, um, I don't believe we have built, but correct me if I'm wrong, because I hope I am. I don't think that we've built, um, parks equipment. Replacement into the capital projects budget in any way, have we?
Um, yep, there's parks equipment in there.
Which, what, like all of the parks equipment?
Um, I believe so, yeah. If you look on page seventy six of the budget.
Playground equipment?
Yes.
Uh, no, no, that, that wouldn't be into.
I'm talking about like parks infrastructure items.
Yeah, no.
Um.
Playground equipment.
Um.
Plumbing, that kind of like.
Those types of things don't usually go into the cap, in capital projects.
But they should because they have a twenty year lifespan. So we should be budgeting, I, I, I mean, I, I mean, I know it's not going to happen, Jamie. But I think we probably should be putting about a hundred thousand bucks at least, um, more into the capital projects budget annually. To account for a twenty year replacement cycle for the, how mu-. What we've got, we've got equipment in probably seven parks out there, right?
You could put six hundred and thirty six thousand.
No, we couldn't, we didn't have that money to start with. That was just a chimera. But anyway, that, I. It would be my suggestion that we begin, i- i- if we had like a. Like a secondary shadow capital projects budget that incorporated some of the costs that we knew we couldn't afford, but we wished we could, that should be in there. Because that is something that we, we. The, the one. Somewhat foolish thing I thought we did with some of our ARPA funding was we augmented our parks equipment instead of replacing our parks equipment. And that means that we now have more equipment that we will need to fix at some point in the near future and less money to do it with. Um, so I, I, I do think that we should get a real number for that, um, even if we, even, much like our other post employment benefits. It's a number that we will need to find somewhere at some point, and so I think that it would help us to know how much that is. Um, I'm sorry to be bringing up things that aren't making our financial picture any better. I'm just. Trying to get the.
Well, it does by being aware of it so that in a few years we're like, we're not, oh, crap.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it, it does, just.
I spend a lot of time at playgrounds right now.
Yeah.
And I know that we're gonna need to replace some of the equipment soon. But. In a couple of years, I won't be there anymore and, and then my radar, it'll be somebody else's problem.
Thanks, Liz.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll kick the, I'll kick the candy you out of.
Thanks.
Hey, we learned it last time before.
Yeah, right.
Didn't put money aside.
Okay.
Um, new hires in this budget. The only one. That comes to mind, and I shouldn't say it's a new hire, but it's a community development. There, there was the position. That, uh, I think was the office manager position.
Correct.
Um, so they transitioned to a different role and the position was unfilled and we cut that and that was put back in. That's the only one that comes to mind.
That is the only one.
That is the only.
There, there is a, a third of an employee added for, um, a retirement and fire, but that is not, it's just to move into a. A role, yeah, there are no other.
Hire, there's no.
There are no other new hires in this budget.
Yeah. Any other items for discussion? Any other thoughts on budget, um, before turning an eye to second reading by members? Raise like, nah, I don't know. Okay, um. Well, that, I mean, yeah.
Oh, really? It's my favorite.
Look, it's, look, it's part of the job. I mean, and, and, and look. You know, I, I think to, to, to Eric's point, and I, and I would second this, you know, I think. Um, th- th- there's been a lot of transition in, in department leadership and employees on my time on council. Um, and, and to Eric's point, I agree. I think that we've got. Probably the, the best team in place, um. To help us through what we need to do over the next couple of years, so, um. I'm excited for that for sure. Um. But that process, i- i- it's, it's naturally messy. It's going to be bumpy, um, because you're going to have differences of opinion. Um, you've got different perspectives from a combination of different experiences and, and it's all good stuff, um. You know, we just gotta keep the end goal in sight of, um, making a better financial picture for the city. Um, and being willing to be open minded that, um, we don't each individually have all the answers. Others might have good ideas and be willing to push back on ones that we don't think are, or, or, or find some consensus. That's what it's going to take. So.
I think you're right, right there. You know, the communicating with everybody as far as their wants and needs. Uh, sometimes the wants don't necessarily have to go be brought before us. You know, we have to go after all the needs and like, instead of, you know. I mean, all of us, I look at our, our lives and it's like, there's a lot of things I would want, but. There's only a few things that I really, really need. And I think that's if we communicate with the administration.
Yeah.
You know, uh.
Yeah.
And if everybody understands, I mean. It's, it's hard. It really is hard. You're dealing with other people's money.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, it's hard.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, communication, I mean, I mean, look, I'm, I'll be, I'll be the first to admit, I mean, I, I. That's been an area of growth for me, not only being on council, but sitting in this chair for the past couple of years. And I mean, like Derek, I mean, I'll. I don't know what you, I mean, I think this has gotten better. Our communication has gotten better. There's still a lot of room for growth, right? Um, part of that's just the dynamics of, I mean, this is part time, right? I, I have a job. Uh, that requires my time and, and some other, you know, life choices that I, that I have made, right? Um, but, um, but we'll, we'll, we'll get there, um, you know. I think we, I think we all are committed to doing the best that we can on that front, um, and I, I think the mayor. Um, will be as well. Um, that's going to be crucial for this action plan and, and getting through twenty twenty five, absolutely. So. We're getting better with it. Still room to grow. Um, I'm hopeful we'll do it. So. Any other comments, thoughts before we? Kick this one in the bud, then go into the next one? Bye. Like I said, I'm, I'm looking forward to what Jamie and the mayor come up with, um, for second reading. Um. And, uh. Go from there. Um, all right, Mrs. Frank on item ten, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six, zero. We'll move to item eleven, Mrs. Frank.
Ordinance of the City of Williamsport County about coming in Commonwealth of Pennsylvania fixing the tax rate for all city purposes. For the year twenty twenty five, seventeen point oh five mils. And first reading.
Is there a motion in a second?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion a second, Ms. Livermore.
Good evening again.
Evening again.
Um, this ordinance is for the proposed, um, tax change that was proposed in the budget that you received. Um, that we discussed in the budget session on November eighteenth and the twentieth.
Yeah. Um. So the tax ordinance proposes a third of a mill increase on the millage rate.
Correct.
Right? Um, and you know, I mean, look, I mean, I, I, I'll be the first to admit, you know, my, my individual. Philosophy is, you know, I, I, I like to see taxes as low as possible, right? Um, I've, I've voted against tax increases before, um, I don't like them, um, but I. Am not. I, I can't sit here and deny that there is not necessarily a need to increase taxes, um, you know. It, there, there is certainly an argument for, um. What's the, like fiscal responsibility to, and, and kind of what we're looking at to do it. Um, and so, you know, I don't like it. Um, and I certainly understand any argument, um. Or not supporting a tax increase, I get it, um, but, um, you know. I, I will be voting to keep the rate as it is, um, for that, but like I said, I, I get other people, um. That, that may not agree with that completely, so, um, but anyway, that's, that's what the current, um, ordinance is written as. A third millage rate increase, um, and so. Any comments or questions? This is not, again, this is not go to committee as well. Sorry, forgot to mention that. It normally doesn't. Um. Any comments or reflections? We have a second reading of this as well, so, um, you know, people want to lobby one way or the other. Um, that can happen in a week and that could change for sure, but. You're in crickets, so.
I'm saving all my comments for next week.
Fair. Um, Mrs. Frank on item eleven, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz, no. Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
No.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes four to two. Uh, let's jump down to item sixteen, please. Jamie, thank you for.
Thank you.
Hanging in there. Um, we'll be ready for next week.
Resolution awarding the trash removal contract for years twenty twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven for the city of Williamsport.
Is there a motion in a second?
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. Livermore, thank you for your patience, sir, and good evening.
Down to me, potatoes in this meeting.
Yeah.
So what you have for his resolution, uh, wearing the trash remover twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven. In the amount of fifty five thousand three hundred and eighty three forty nine, uh, Bauer's disposal was the awarded the. Contract for the next three years, um. They've been. Doing our trash, I believe, I mean, from what I was told, probably ten years in the city, so, um. This, from the last one we did was, I think, seventy five thousand, so we are down a little bit. However, I went through this. Contract before we put it out to bid to. Really take a hard look at what we had in the city and what we actually need, what needs to be taken out, what needs to be added in. Um, so we did save some money, it looks like there. Um, this went through Public Works and it was reviewed by Austin. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Livermore. Mrs. Katz, Public Works.
I think that said it all. We're happy that they went down in price and we're happy they're collecting our trash.
Any comments or questions? Yeah, hearing seen on Mrs. Frank on item sixteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six, zero. Item seventeen, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of two twenty twenty five freight liner chassis. Four by two cab dump trucks with. Radco Supply Company.
Is there a motion in a second?
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. Livermore.
Yes, what you have for you is resolution authorizing the purchase of two twenty twenty five freight liners, um. They are, these are two trucks I am replacing, which are twenty years old right now in my fleet, um, upgrading them. Uh, for the amount of four hundred thousand. Six dollars, four hundred and six, seven forty two thirty four, um, these were. Are being purchased through ARPA that was approved last year. These are the, the vendor for these trucks that are doing the build is. Ex-Garage and the outfits of going through Radco Supply. Um. This went through Public Work as well and was approved by Austin.
Mrs. Katz.
Um, these trucks will be ready in a year, January twenty six, right?
These trucks hopefully are ready in two months. Oh, no, a year ago, we, I went to get these approved. It takes a year, a year and a half to build this thing, so I'm hoping to have them next actually month.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
It's sooner than better, okay? It's better. That's all I have to say.
Any other comments or questions? From members? All right. Hearing seen on Mrs. Franklin, item, um, seventeen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six, zero. Um, Scott, thank you very much. Uh, we'll move to item eighteen.
Resolution of the City Council to approve substantial amendments to fiscal year twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two. Action, annual action plans for CDBG and Home Investment Partners Program.
Is there a motion in a second?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Thank you for your patience.
Scott said as I was walking up, they saved the best for last, so those are his words. The resolution that you have in front of you is, um, as Janice already read. So essentially, every year, our department puts together an annual action plan for how we're going to spend our CDBG and home funds. This action plan is put together based on input from the community, public hearings and community needs. The action plan is then approved by the mayor, by council and by HUD. So in the event that we get to the end of the year and we have funding left over. Because a project was either completed with funds remaining or abandoned. Um, we then need to move those funds into future projects to make sure that they are spent in full. So essentially what you have in front of you is the information regarding projects from twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty one and twenty two. That were either completed with balances or abandoned and. I am asking to move those funds into new projects. That would be the completion of the Elm Park renovations and some equipment for the Williamsport Bureau of Fire. Um, Councilwoman Mealy asked me in the finance committee meeting to give. A comprehensive overview of what is happening at Elm Park. I know that Bill and Scott have been up. Um, asking for, you know, bid approvals and things like that, but overall, what will be happening at Elm Park is. Some ADA parking upgrades, some ADA sidewalk upgrades, a bathroom upgrade. And then some of the tennis courts are going to be converted into pickleball courts.
I think it's a twofer, right? Tennis court and pickleball court.
That that was at the request of Councilman Mackey.
Okay.
For his pickleball league.
I thought it's a, it's a twofer, right? Aren't they tennis courts and pickleball?
Yeah, there'll be three, three tennis courts, there there are six there now, three's gonna stay and there's gonna be six pickleball put in.
But you can play tennis. Yeah, oh, no, but we are, but we're doing them different. I I thought we were just putting lines inside of the tennis courts. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Wouldn't that be better, though? If, is there a reason why we can't do that?
Well, so you you could do that. The problem is you get the real pickleballers out here, the next one inch off. Wow. We've already went through a couple of that with.
Oh, my goodness.
But.
Wow. Passionate.
I'm looking forward for the, for when the wars between the tennis players and the pickleball players start, I mean, cause that's.
Police have been called.
As an occasional tennis player, I get vaguely offended by all the pickleball stuff, so I can only imagine how anybody. Who takes the game seriously feels.
I I do have a question for you, Mr. Livermore and Mayor Slaughter, if you could just, what is the status of the, um. Property, um, Elm Park proper as far as who is, who owns that currently? Has have we gotten that out of the hands of our VTA? Uh, the surveying, I believe, has been done and so on.
Yeah, yeah, we just had a meeting on. Yesterday, yeah, so I think it's about the utilities, I think it's the final piece.
Something with the surveying of the utility outlets or something that what they were at, but it was closed to done. From what they said yesterday.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, the other thing to touch on with the tennis courts and pickleball, we are, we did ask the uh engineering company to give us prices. For lights for that as well. It's like, be like, uh, Brandon Park.
Okay.
Okay, great. Um, and then for the Williamsport Bureau of Fire, Liz, they're purchasing SCBA's with that funding.
Hmm, yeah.
Smeeley, anything to add from finance?
Um. Uh, no, nothing in particular. Well, I guess actually. Uh, it's excellent to see us getting caught up on moving some money around and getting the funds expended. Um, do we have, uh. Do we feel as that we've got a good enough grasp on our, will this al- always be something that's happening, I guess, more or less Valerie? Given that we won't necessarily, we'll have projects that don't come to fruition in any given community development year.
My expectation is that this will always happen to some extent, but not as far back as we're reaching back this time.
Okay.
So based on the, when HUD releases the funding, so. Um, you don't get your funding essentially until the end of the year, so the projects that we slated for twenty twenty four. We are completing in twenty twenty five because they release funding at the end of twenty twenty four. So, um, there will be a little bit of this moving forward, but my expectation would be that we would be. Maybe reallocating twenty three funds into twenty five projects rather than twenty eighteen funds into twenty five projects. So naturally, a little bit is gonna happen because of the HUD, you know, timing, but, um. I have an expectation that our our staff can can keep up on, especially with the help of CEDACOG.
Hmm, yeah, yeah, I just, it 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 seems as though there's a little bit of it that just, I mean, look at the ARPA funding and how many times we've moved that around.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's a certain level of it that happened.
Absolutely.
Um, which is exciting because then we get to complete projects that we didn't think we'd be able to.
Yes, and add lights to parks, so that's great.
Um, anyway, thanks for the update, um, and yeah, there was nothing of any. Importance about this particular project and.
Any other comments or questions from members? Alright, here you can see none, Mrs. Franklin, item eighteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passed six zero, thank you, Val.
Thank you.
Uh, Janice, we're on twenty, did I miss anything?
Nope, we're fine, except for filing.
Yep, uh, item twenty, except for filing, we have the Water Sanitary Authority meeting minutes from October twenty third, two thousand twenty four. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions from members of council? Here you can see none, uh, Mrs. Frank on the motion for item twenty.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero, item twenty one announcements, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be next week. Um, Thursday, December twelfth, seven PM here in Trade and Transit, two third floor. Upcoming meetings, um, December tenth, Tuesday, eleven thirty AM, Public Safety, one PM, Finance, two thirty PM, Public Works. Wednesday, December eleventh, nine AM, Economic Revitalization, and Thursday, twelfth, seven PM, City Council Meeting. Um, and I'll announce, we're gonna have a brief executive session following this related to contract negotiations. Um, any comments from members of city council? Any comments from the administration? Any comments from the public? Any questions, clarifications from the news media? Alright, take a motion in a second for a German.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion, our meeting.